Thank you very much. I bring together this meeting of the Westboro Select Board here in Memorial Hall. It being after 6:00 PM. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone here for open forum today?
Shaun, you want to go about the TV recording?
Yes, right, yeah. We are being livestreamed and recorded by Westboro TV. Thank you. Anyone here for open forum? Seeing none. We move to the second item on our agenda. Approve amendments to the Finance Director job description.
So you can see the job description marked up in your packet. The majority of them are pretty minor tweaks to the job description. Most significant probably is the number of employees that report up to the Finance Director because as you remember, we did take one employee position out of the Treasure Collector office several years or a couple of years ago when we created HR Coordinator. And then we've since added the Chief Procurement Officer into the accounting side of the Finance Department. And so these, this was reviewed with the current Finance Director in anticipation of her retirement. So once this is approved, then we would expect to post the position tomorrow.
I'll move to approve the proposed amendments to the Finance Director job description as presented.
Second. All right. Any discussion or questions? No? All those in favor? Five to zero. Five being present. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have discussion of the Affordable Housing Trust roles and responsibilities.
I'll start that and then Alan can jump in. So before our previous town planner left, we identified that there are several roles that the Housing Partnership, the Planning Department, myself, or our office, this board, you know, and others have in related to affordable housing. And so all of that was kind of set up in a decentralized way. And it was certainly before we had an Affordable Housing Trust. So we met myself, the Community Development Director, the then-town planner, and then the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. And Alan, as your representative to that committee, met to just discuss ways that we could potentially streamline the process, include the Affordable Housing Trust in some of these decisions. And so Alan drafted a memo to the Affordable Housing Trust. And so we wanted to show it for your review. And Alan, I don't know if you want to walk through it?
Sure. So I'll add, I can walk through it very quickly. But I'll add also that the trustees voted unanimously to accept any and all of these responsibilities should the town feel it's appropriate to transfer or delegate them. These include, first off, is the Housing Partnership Committee. This is a committee that is codified under master general law and included in our charter. We've had a very difficult time having enough active members for it to even have a quorum for several years now. And so the thought would be, under master general law, housing trusts can serve or be the point authority for the Housing Partnership Committee. And so our thought would be to basically allow the trust to be the appointing authority for the Housing Partnership Committee, where the trustees themselves could be a committee in the whole to provide those functions. There's a lot of overlap between Housing Partnership Committee work and work with the trust. It would be an extension of what we do with respect to getting more involved with private developers pre-permitting, as far as encouraging them and assisting them in finding funding sources to increase the percentage of affordable housing in their developments. Second is right of first refusal for SHI units. When privately owned subsidized housing units go up for sale, the town has a right of first refusal. So we're, rarely would the town want to exercise that right. However, the trust is an entity that can buy and sell property in affordable housing. There might be reasons where the trust might want to invest in a property that comes up for sale. It could be a wide variety of reasons. There was one potential case, you know, recently where the owner was thinking of selling. There was a medical issue and would need a quick sale. The trust had the right to execute, right of first refusal. We could buy and immediately flip the property and help that person do what they need to do. It could also be we might look at an owned unit and want to convert it to rental for a period of time. Or there might be some rehab or expansion, you know, capabilities there that we might invest in. And so there's some work being done right now by council as to whether the Select Board can delegate that right and to what extent. And so we'll come back at a future point in time with that. Additionally, when subsidized housing that's privately owned applies to the state for refinancing or to make capital improvements, the town has a sign-off power. Basically, we're, the town is looking at the paperwork from the owner and from DHCD and saying, as far as the town's concerned, everything's in order. That can be transitioned. We've had some of those in the last several years come before the Select Board. That could be delegated to the trust as well. And we could, or at the very least authorize us to do the investigative work and come back with the recommendation to the board that says, yes, you know, the refinancing is compliant with the terms of any permitting and agreements and deed restrictions related to affordable housing. Next is validation of the SHI list from DHCD, which is now the HLC, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. We actually just received the list, as well as our AMI percentages. We've already found two errors in it, working with our town planner. And so this would transfer the responsibility of the annual validation from the town planner's office to the trust. We would go investigate. We would keep the records of comprehensive permits and things of that nature internally, so that we could quickly make a determination if the numbers and the information from the state's correct. And we would go back to HLC and request modifications to the information. Closely related to that is SHI rent monitoring. There are a couple of SHI programs, rental, you know, rental complexes where because the financing has ended, but the units are still affordable, transfer for rent monitoring, the role of rent monitoring to make sure that the rents they're charging are compliant falls to the town. That was being done for, by a prior town planner who for a period of time had actually hired an outside consultant to do it for us. In addition to making sure that they're charging the right rent, we have the right to request documentation that they're actually rented to people who qualify and are eligible to be in those units. And it's unclear how frequently that's been done in the past. So the trustees are willing to take on that responsibility. We would either do it ourselves, or we would, with our funds, contract with a consultant to put a more robust monitoring program in. So for example, there, on our SHI list, there's at least one project where the monitoring agent is DHCD, but they're past the term of their financing under comprehensive permit. It's unclear if DHCD is still actively requesting the information and doing the validation on an annual basis. So, you know, our volunteers are willing to make those phone calls and figure that out to make sure that the complexes stay compliant. And then last would be more of just a policy change. There are times when property comes to the town for right of first refusal, such as coming out of agricultural exemption and certain other situations. The Housing Trust would like to be able, as we do with open space and recreation and other departments, be able to chime in. In that, you know, there may be a property that comes to market where the town's right of a first refusal, or that property is a good fit for the goals and objectives of the trust. We just want to be able to make that request to the Select Board for consideration.
Thank you, Ellen. Questions?
Yeah, just, I don't know how long we want to spend talking on this tonight, but just a couple of questions, not expecting answers if we don't have them. So it looks like under the first right of refusal section, I'll call it kind of item number two, it looks like there's a, potentially an option. You said council was looking into that, whether or not the Select Board can delegate our right. But it looks like that potentially could go a couple of ways. It could be that we fully delegate that, or it's a recommendation that would then come, would first be reviewed by the Affordable Housing Trust and then come through as a recommendation or support or not to the Select Board.
Right. We're looking to find out what can be done, so that we can have the discussion of then, what do we want to do within that range of limits?
Yep.
You know, one of the, one of the issues is if it's the trust that wants the property, can the trust buy directly, or does the town have to buy it and the trust have to buy it from the town?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so we're trying to work out those mechanisms. And so we can come back and say, here's what we can do, here's what's allowed. Do you want to make a change? And if so, you know, what does the board want to do?
Okay. Great. Because if, because it's the town really that's exercising its right of first refusal. So that's where that question comes in.
Right, right. Okay. Well, that's sort of, actually, I skipped over my question on the Housing Partnership. Is there any potential conflict of interest, given the goals of the Affordable Housing Trust, working with external developers in any way that are looking to develop, but the Housing Trust might have sort of its own interest in item number one, where you said that the trustees would be serving as the partnership committee?
There, so the Housing Partnership's role is to help developers get through the permitting process.
Okay, yep.
Could there be a potential opportunity where the Housing Trust was interested in a property, as was the developer, and that developer came to the trust as the Housing Partnership for a committee? Yep, there is that possibility. We'd have to effectively recuse ourselves.
Kind of navigate through that. Okay.
Navigate through that. Ideally, what we'd like is for it to be a subcommittee that has one trustee on it as a liaison and is staffed by residents. But until we can get there.
Sure, yeah.
Get people involved.
Yep. No, that makes sense. So I mean, I think generally it, a lot of these changes seem to sort of make sense in streamlining the process and giving the trust sort of the expeditious route that often goes with kind of more commercial transactions. So that makes sense. The one that I'm a little bit shaky on is that number two of, you know, fully kind of transitioning that, delegating that authority. But everything else, I think that a lot of these other changes certainly, you know, make sense. And you guys are, have quickly become extremely knowledgeable about all these elements, which is a huge asset to the town.
And we're not, as a trust, we're not sure if we should have the responsibility to make the decision for right of our first refusal. So there's two components. One, who votes to execute right? And who can then execute the transaction?
Understood.
You know, the concern is that if, if the trust wants a property and then the town has to buy it, and then the trust has to transfer it from the town.
It's not efficient.
The Select Board can vote to exercise the right of our first refusal. That doesn't go to town meeting. The transfer of the property does.
Right, right.
And then, and so it's time, it's money, and there's a potential, people don't know.
Sure.
And then the town is a homeowner.
Yeah, right, understood.
We don't really want either. So it's, you know, we'll see what's possible and what's appropriate. We'll have that discussion, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Nice, great summary, as always, from the trust. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just make a comment here. First of all, you know, I want to say thank you for all your work on this. You know, the letter was very thorough. It answered a lot of my questions. So I really appreciate that work and certainly the work of the trust that they do in this space. So thank you very much. My question was also around the first right of refusal. You answered, I think, many of my questions. But I am looking for kind of what that suggestion is that comes back from it. Because, you know, land, I think, is an important asset to the town. And being involved in that process at the appropriate time, the appropriate level, I think is certainly a key responsibility of this board. So I don't necessarily want to see that go away. But I also understand the efficiencies that can be gained through this process. So I look forward to continued conversation on it.
I don't have a whole lot to add. I agree with what was said there, I think, getting that fine resolution. But there are some things that I think the board should still, you know, have their hand in. And I think we'll just see how that comes up. But I mean, I do think a lot of this, like everyone said, makes sense. There's a lot of efficiencies here, things that work well for the town that we should be able to implement and appreciate that. I guess the one concern I have is, is I read that, we have a very good Affordable Housing Trust right now. And as we talked about, we've struggled to get Housing Partnership Committee. But as members turn over, I guess my concern is we put all this stuff on there. And if we don't get new, similar type people in the Affordable Housing Trust, do we run the risk if we give too much up that it falls by the wayside and we miss something? I think that's that balance. I want to make sure from a Select Board and oversight. So even if we give some of the stuff up, maybe it is that there's a report that comes to the Select Board or some piece. I think we just want to work together on that. Just to make sure that we don't give it up and lose sight of it. And then we, something falls to the cracks, especially on affordable housing, as we all know.
Particularly like the list, right, the list. It might be as simple as an update to the board, whatever frequency.
Yeah. And I love you guys doing it, not town planner, but we're working the town planner.
We can certainly codify reporting.
Yep.
The other thing is things like managing the SHI inventory and working with HLC to make sure it's accurate. You know, that, we believe, is effectively just a vote of the Select Board. So at any point in time, it could be, you know, removed.
Yeah, and actually, I don't even think it's about, I mean.
Or even at the town planner's discretion.
Right. I mean, so we can just work, we do it at the department head level. So we could just work with Affordable Housing Trust. I think the two changes, the proposed articles, still give you the ability to pull it back. That's how I read it.
Yeah. And the way we've ordered the Housing Partnership Committee, it's, our authority is contingent on the delegation from the Select Board, which can be removed at any time. So if a simple majority vote of the Select Board says, nope, we need the Housing Partnership Committee back under our domain purely, the Select Board votes and that happens.
Yep. I think this all makes sense. I think it, I think you said it right. As we codify, codify, whatever, whatever the right way to pronounce that word is, codify. And work on that reporting, but I'm supportive of the moves. I think they do make sense. It puts clear control in one area where there's expertise. So I am supportive. It sounds like I'd be supportive of putting this on, the articles on town meeting. I think there's just those few loose ends to tie up, just so we're clear. Because they'll probably get the same questions at town meeting. So it'll be good for us to, you know, further.
There are other housing trusts that serve as the partnership committee. And we've done some outreach to see how that works. And we can ask about potential conflicts if that's happened.
Perfect.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a couple of comments myself. First of all, I agree, the current incarnation of the Affordable Housing Trust is doing an amazing job. You know, I mean, so certainly if they feel they can take on additional work. I think that the thing that concerns me a little is discussion with the now-planning director. The planning director reports to a separately-elected body. So, and I don't know how that works in terms of what the duties of the town planner are. But I mean, I feel like this needs to be run, some of these need to be run through the planning board.
So the right of first refusal and SHI is a, statutorily, it's a town function?
It's a Select Board.
So there's no, I'd say it's arguable that there's no clear direction on where it sits within town government?
Yeah, it's just sort of how it's fallen.
And I think that our prior town planner was doing it out of convenience. At one point, it was the SHI monitoring and the list management was being done by the Housing Partnership Committee.
He also wasn't doing it alone. I mean, he was doing it with our Community Development Director and our Chief Assessor, and so.
I would think if we wanted to move forward on some of those items, it would at least be a dis- it would at least be a discussion with the Planning Board.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think we'd want their support if we go to town meeting. I think it makes sense.
All right. But, otherwise, I think I agree with what the rest of the board said. Thank you very much. Any final thoughts?
Sorry, can I just ask? So, you would want the Planning Board to weigh in on the articles?
I think anything that has been a duty performed by the Town Planner in some fashion should at least be discussed with the Planning Board.
Okay.
I think at the town, annual town meeting before this past one, the town made clear that the Town Planner reports to the Planning Board. So, I think we need to at least then have those discussions with the Planning Board.
No, I completely agree. I think it's, if we don't do it that way, we run the risk of going to town meeting and having the Planning Board, well, maybe not disagreeing, just saying, hey, we never saw this, and then it won't pass, I think.
Well, I guess that's why I brought it up, because some of those things are internal functions that wouldn't go to town meeting. So, I mean, I think I, what I'm hearing from Sean is that everything should go to the Planning Board for discussion, but you're saying maybe just the articles.
Well, and I'm saying, even if it doesn't require a vote, I think the fair thing to do is talk to the Planning Board about the functions performed by the person who reports to them.
The prior person that reported to them.
And in theory, then, hand, you know, handed to the person who has taken over that role. I mean, certainly, they can be...
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Makes sense.
We have no qualms having those discussions with the Planning Board.
I mean, I, otherwise, I think we're just saying, hey, you're welcome. We took stuff off the Planning Director's plate.
No, I get that, I get that.
So, but it's not going before town meeting or anything. I think it's just having that discussion.
Yeah, and we'll just let them know that some of the stuff he actually didn't do alone. So, it's not just the Planning Director's responsibility.
Sure.
And I think it's likely that we get a "that makes sense," but it would be fair to bring that to them. They are also an elected body. All right, we'll get on that one. Next, we are up to item four, the Police Chief Hiring Process. And I don't know if anyone wants to start here in particular, or...
I can start. I know you didn't mean me, but the, in your packet is just some additional information. So, there's, there's the memo that was prepared for the last meeting that I noted in my packet. It just gives a little bit more detail related to the options that the town has. As I noted, it was reviewed by Town Council, so in terms of your ability to move forward with any of these processes, it's fully, you're capable of doing that. Also included in the packet is, in addition to the other materials we've seen before, resumes, letters of support, there's also emails in here that we've received from some members of the community regarding concerns around following the charter.
Thank you very much. All right. Anybody like to go first, or?
I, I mean, so, I guess I'll jump in. I would love for the board to kind of continue its discussion. I think a couple of weeks ago, we had, I think, a really healthy, helpful discussion, where we shared our views. I know I certainly have had a chance to think about that. And in the meantime, obviously, we received feedback from the community, which Christie just mentioned. I know I, people have reached out to me personally and shared some of their thoughts as well. Perhaps other board members have received the same and would want to, through their, through this discussion, you know, kind of share that and kind of ultimately, hopefully, land on a direction, you know, tonight, if we can. So, I'm happy to start with some thoughts, but certainly do not intend, at this point, to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. So, I guess I would just say that, based on the language in the charter, I remain, I continue to remain supportive of following the process that's in the charter and the processes that we've followed in the past with our past appointment of key personnel, fire, Town Manager, DPW Director, et cetera. While Town Council has said, has indicated that, as Christie just said, we are fully within our right to sidestep, if you will, my own words, not council's, on the charter. I can't wrap my head around that because of the language "shall." And so, if we want to go down that road, I might ask that we have a conversation as a board with Town Council to, directly, to understand kind of how they, how that person arrived at their finding. I view, you know, our town charter being akin to sort of the Constitution. And while the Constitution certainly is interpreted by the Supreme Court and other lawmakers to some extent, I just, I'm hesitant for this board to go down that process. I'd rather see us make a change to the charter in anticipation of what our strategic plan says, what our staffing study says, and recognize that we have an intent around succession planning. We do have deputy chiefs now, and let's anticipate that in the future. But, we're sort of caught here in the middle based on where, what the language says. Alternately, should the board decide by a majority to go down a promotionary process, and I think we certainly have a very qualified candidate in our interim chief, and I think, you know, that is not certainly debated here by, I think, anyone, including a vast majority of the public and other public safety officials in the, you know, kind of surrounding areas. What I would suggest is that we, this board would have a very public interview process. I would want to hear from the interim chief in a presentation, and then I would want to have an open Q and A session, where we would then determine after that process if we would proceed with a promotionary process. So, we could kind of indicate our intent to go down that process, and then, you know, kind of have that open session, and then the board could make its determination. So, those are my comments, and I look forward to hearing it from everyone else.
Thank you, Shelby.
Yep.
Next.
Yeah, I guess I'll jump in and, I guess, more reiterate what I had said in the prior meeting. I still am very supportive of going the promotional route here. I think there are a lot of differences, some of what were highlighted in the materials here and precedent or non-precedent setting. But, I do think it's a opportunity that we have, that really has been brought on by, as I said the last time, a request that we have looked for as a town in terms of succession planning and putting, that process in place for us to be able to promote from within. And I know that in the hiring of the last Police Chief is one of the things we asked of him, and one of the things that he, in essence, promised to do for us. And I think he succeeded in that. I think that our deputy chiefs succeeded in the work that was put in front of him, and probably exceeded the work there from indications that, at least personally, I've heard and observed, but have heard from others as well, and we saw some in the, in the letters that were there. So, I think that, to me, this is one of the things, same as the last time, that it's precedent-setting for other departments. I don't believe that is. I'm not saying that now it is, you know, everything is promotional. I think, I would love it to be that way. I think it's a healthy way for us to do things, but it doesn't mean that, that we have, we'll have the opportunity or it's the right thing to do for other departments. But, irregardless of that, I think we do have the opportunity here with a strong candidate, a department that has, is excelling for what the community needs, being led by now the interim chief on this, but the one who was, you know, worked and was an architect of a lot of that. And I think that this sends a strong message to, to our police officers, it sends a strong message throughout the town, that we will look at this, and when there is a qualified candidate, that we will go down the road of promoting from within. One thing that I'd just add from our last meeting, there was, I think, a discussion, and I'll paraphrase it as best I can, was, you know, kind of, we don't know what we don't know. We know the interim chief well, but there could be someone out there, and we should get to know that person. What I put in there is that through that interview process, you get to know a little bit about them, and you'll get some recommendations that they've asked for. I don't know that you really get to know them the way that we know our interim chief right now. So, I think it is, personally, I think it's in the town's best interest that we move forward with a promotional process here. I'm willing to, Shelby, to your points, and discuss, you know, the opportunity to have him come in front of us to speak and outline kind of what he would do as the Police Chief with the promotion, and ask questions there. But, again, I am, in my mind, still extremely convinced that the promotional process is the right one for this board to follow.
So, this is not an easy discussion by any stretch of the imagination. I share, Shelby, I share your respect for the charter and the word "shall." Absent that, I think this would be a much easier decision and discussion at this point in time. But, I also know that in setting up a system where we have deputies with the intent to be able to promote from within, is actually, to me, it's a very powerful mechanism for, you know, if we're happy with the current service and the direction of the department and the leadership team that's providing that, then the continuity that the promotional process presents is an advantage. We've had discussions, and we're aware, and the public may be aware, of the large number of Police Chief retirements, and retirements of senior officers in other departments throughout the state. So, I think you opened it up. I think that adds a level of risk. Also, you know, recognizing that our department's accredited at post version six. And I know we're the first. I don't know if we're still the only one. You know, by definition, I wouldn't expect to see a candidate that's been through that process and has already operated within the framework of working under those requirements and under that accreditation and maintaining it, and being involved in the next step. And so, you know, that's a consideration for me as well. I don't want anything in our discussion or process, and this worries me greatly, to be seen as a vote of no confidence in our current interim chief or the leadership team or the rank and file of our department. And I would be devastated if in any way we were sending that kind of a message to him or to them. And so, I think, you know, Shelby's suggestion about a presentation and a Q and A session prior to making a decision is a very interesting and intriguing idea, because it gives us the ability to bring forth our, you know, our deputy chief, our interim chief is, I'm sorry, our interim chief is a candidate for, for the public, and have that in a public venue, at which point we can decide how we want to proceed.
Thank you, Ellen.
Sure, thank you, Sean. You know, I would just say, I concur with everything Shelby described and mentioned. I do feel that we have a very strong candidate in our, in our current interim chief, and I do applaud him for being willing to put his name in the hat and move forward. But nonetheless, I do feel very strongly about the town's charter, and I do feel very strongly that the town have the opportunity to look at all candidates. I, to speak to what Shelby brought up in regards to the feedback we've received from the community, the feedback I've received in various different, you know, we've seen the emails, I would say. We've received several emails supporting the charter approach. I know that we've received some emails in regards to the promotional approach. In discussions, people have, you know, talked to me, and I would say it was almost a 50/50 split, you know? And so, and that's good to see, you know, that the community is watching and involved and listening to what's happening here, and it's an important topic. In regards to the promotional process, I would be supportive of that, because it doesn't sound like we're going to go back and have a revote of what we voted on already as a result of the feedback we've gotten from the community. So, if we're going to go down that path of a promotional process and an interview, I would, I would suggest, I would like to see us at the next board meeting, have a discussion in regards to what the format of that discussion would be. And I'll give you a preview of what I'm thinking. Traditional process that I've been involved with is that we have pre-canned questions that the board has for a candidate, and that's used because we usually have more than one candidate, and we want to be fair to all candidates, asking them consistent questions. This is not the case in this particular instance. So, I would be looking for the freedom to be able to ask any question of the candidate during this open forum, so that we get a full context of what his vision is of the Police Department, where he sees the struggles of the Police Department, and where he sees how he can, what the opportunities that he sees for the Police Department to solve some of those problems in the community. So, you know, just some thoughts there, if we go down that path, as to how I kind of see that working out. Thanks, Sean.
All right. Thank you, Patrick. Yes, in talking about this process, I think we need to look at each opportunity as it comes up within that specific context, and try and make the best decision based on those opportunities, depending on who's available for the position, what we feel the state of the depart, that specific department is in. And so, you know, I agree with others that it does not make sense to do a search just to do a search. If, if we're confident that we have the candidate, I don't know that that serves the process. For me, I look at this and I say, there's, there's two reasons to do a search. One is, for me, one is, we don't feel like we have an internal candidate. That is not the case here. And then, two is, we're unsure about the direction of the department. And that is also not the case here. I think the department has done everything and more that the community has asked of them. And so, going out and doing a search and talking to other candidates, I don't feel is in the best interests of the department as a whole. For me, you really look at external candidates if you feel that something needs to change. And again, I say, I don't think anything needs to change with our Police Department. And I know later on in our meeting, we'll talk about some things going on in town. Let me just say, the members of the Police Department as a whole represented themselves very well over the last few days, very well. And I don't get a lot of chances to see them firsthand, and...
It's good to know.
Yeah, yeah, and...
Not like you, Shelby.
But...
How long do you have?
Just, you know, impressed with, with the department. So...
Echo that.
For me, the right thing to support the department is to look at a promotional process in this instance. in, in this instance, so.
Sean?
Yes.
I just, I appreciate everyone's comments. I just wanted to clarify what I said before and I tried to be careful, but I guess may all be clearer. I think that if we decide in a promotional process, I don't, I wouldn't call asking the chief to come before us and speak about his vision and answer questions as an interview process. I think that's a different, that's still a search. It's a search of one candidate. I guess I have the question, is, is that even legal for us to do? I'm not sure from what I had read in there. To me, it's a, we've made the decision to the promotional process. I do think there's, and I don't recall if I read it here, if it was through discussion, that there still is checks that need to go through. I think, I don't know if that's true or not, and just in terms of regular, I mean, he's already a member of the staff, so I don't know if there's checks, but just, there's a, I'm sure there's a process we have to follow, even with the promotional piece that's in there. My take of going on, Shelby, what you had proposed is really, I think it is a, it would be an opportunity for us, through this promotional process, to have the chief that we are promoting to the permanent position come in and provide, um, you know, the vision, his discussion of, of what he wants to do, answer questions on our part, but I don't, I, because I wouldn't characterize it as an interview. I think it's a, where we've making the promotional decision and this is the, you know, opportunity for him as the next chief to present to the public of, of where he's going. So, I was, I just wanted to clarify my thoughts there.
Sean, if I may?
Thank you.
Um, so, um, I appreciate that clarification, Ian, that, that's why I thought you, um, that's what I interpreted you to say the first time around, but appreciate that. Um, I guess I would, um, I would welcome and love, and I think it's important not just for this board, but for the public to hear, um, if we go down the promotional process, the interim chief's, you know, vision, experience, get to know you, and then the, here's what I see, you know, one, three, five, whatever years, however he chooses to do that. I do think it is equally as important through that process, let him get, do the presentation. I don't want to get into the minutia here a little bit because maybe this isn't the right time, um, but, um, that we have a chance to ask questions that, that are, come to our, come to mind as, as he's done his presentation or that aren't addressed in his presentation. And, and I, I can't give you an example like off the top of my head, but I guess the, um, for lack of a better way to say it, and, um, I don't want to elevate us too much here, but when you think of like a senate confirmation hearing where you have someone kind of doing their thing, they do their presentation, then each person has an allotted amount of time to kind of be able to ask questions. I think that's very reasonable for this board to do. I think it's fair, I, and I think it's fair to the public and I think it allows this board to, I'm going to say, kind of thread the needle on the charter, um, versus kind of the process which, you know, I, I appreciate all the comments that have been made, um, and, um, and the reasons why the promotional process, um, makes sense at this time, given the candidate and the structure before us. So, but I, I do, you know, the appointment of these key personnel is one of the most important functions of what this board or any future board will do. And, um, I think having a process that, um, kind of stands up to that responsibility, um, I think we just have to take careful consideration of that.
If I may? Yeah, so I think, you know, I'm going to go back to part of Shelby's initial, um, comments and then circle back to what you just said, Ian. In her initial comments, she, she asked the question around if we should have a conversation with town council in regards to the term shall and the charter because we haven't been, we haven't had that opportunity to talk through with them, with the details of why their opinion is that we can do this. Because to me, it is precedent-setting for many reasons, including our ability to bypass the charter anytime we want to in the future, uh, as a board, under the premise that we feel that the charter limits our ability to do what's best for the town. Um, so that's point number one. The second point was your question around the legality of, hey, can we ask questions? My expectation is if we go through this process and we're describing right now, is that it is a Q and A process that allows each, uh, board member unfettered access to ask the questions of the interim chief to get an idea as to if he's still the right candidate. And I would expect at some point after that discussion and after those questions, that we would then have a vote as to whether or not the police chief is still the right candidate for this town. I will say it again, I think I've seen it, said it at least half a dozen times, I feel he's a very strong candidate, but I ha- I don't have no, have had no direct interaction with the, the police chief. So, I've had no ability and that's very limiting as a board member in this situation of such an important position. So, I would ask that perhaps we should be having a discussion with council first to understand the legality on those two points, um, before we, before we move forward with a decision on this.
Can I just, Sean?
Yep, yep.
Or Mr. Chair?
Sean, it's fine.
Um, just, uh, back to your point, I may think, I guess I question the, the comment on, um, you know, we get to know him better, or, you know, to me, it goes back to, I think, discussion with the last time about, well, you go to external search, we may find someone, we'll get to, to know those people better. I think, I'd be hard pressed to figure out that through a external search process with other candidates coming in, that we're going to find someone in there that we're going to know better than who our internal candidate is. So, I do lean back on what Sean said, and I think he, he said it well, is, you know, we have a extremely strong internal candidate that I think is ready for the job. I think you said is a qualified candidate for the job, so that's one. I don't know, like, going through a search process, that we're going to find somebody that we're going to know better than, I would, I would bet that we will not know any of them anywhere close to as much as we know, uh, our, our interim chief right now. So, that, um, is that piece. I just wanted to, to highlight that because it's, it, what then comes in as you go that process, is you say, I want to get to, I don't know him enough. Well, we're not going to know much more than we know now because we've seen him in action. We've got the testimony from folks who work with him, whether that is, and I said it last time, the, um, those that have worked with him and for him in the department and the support of them speaks volumes, um, to me, and that's about the direction and the leadership that's shown there. I think the, um, the letters that we've gotten from, uh, police chiefs in other surrounding communities that have worked with him speak volumes. They know the responsibilities of the job, they know the skills and qualities that Todd has. And I will be honest, I don't know every skill and quality that a police chief does, um, just as Todd probably doesn't know, or Chief Menardi doesn't know every skill and quality of a good select board member and what, what we do. And I'm not saying that any of us are good select board members there.
Yeah, it was a stretch.
You were saying something about finance.
So, I am, you know, I really look at that and, um, you know, for me, I, I feel like, um, this is, this is a, um, hey, I don't call it unique, but this is an opportunity that we have before us, where we have a department in my mind that is working very well, um, has a direction they're going, they, has the accreditation, it's, it's clearly aligned. We have a leader in that department that, um, was leading the department through that in the role as deputy. I, I just think it would be, um, a mistake on us not to move forward with that process. I, I, I worry about the risk of what it says to him and, you know, losing that, losing the opportunity to have him as our next chief if we go down, um, that road. And I, you know, don't know that that would happen or not, but, I mean, we have folks we know within that department at levels beneath them that are moving on to chief's positions. And it shows the strength-
Internal processes.
-of this process. Um, I think we have put a process in place with a deputy chief that allows us to have the opportunity to keep somebody here, um, and, you know, show that, that we, um, respect the work that's been done, respect the direction of the department and, um, to me, again, it's just, it's, it's the right thing for us to do, it's the right thing for, uh, the community at this point, in my, um, in my opinion.
Christie, so, uh, we're kind of talking about two things here. We're talking about the process we're considering and then, once we've made a decision on that process, how we're going to execute on the process. So, the first part needs a vote. Is the second part just kind of our own discussion of, of how we want to execute on that process?
Um, I mean, I think what you're talking about is having the presentation and Q and A happen before or after your vote to appoint. So, um, I think when we were trying to determine the process, we were going to have, we would have the board vote, um, it sounds like now you're talking about putting process around that appointment, the promotional appointment. So, I mean, I think you could just move to the next meeting with the direction of whether you're going to do the vote before or after the presentation questions and then also whether or not you want town council to be present to have the discussion about the charter.
Okay.
So, I guess the short answer is you don't, you don't necessarily have to vote on the process if you all agree that you want to move forward to have this. It sounds like you're, there's, um, it sounds like you're trying to decide whether or not you call it a promotional process or not. If you're making the appointment after the Q and A, then it really represents as an interview.
Right.
So, I think the question is, do you want to do the appointment before or after the Q, the, the presentation and Q and A?
And I just add on to that, to what you had outlined legally, can we basically, in essence, it sounds like we're doing a search of one because it's not a promotion. We're doing interview and deciding after that interview whether we're going to promote it, really sounds like whether we're going to hire or not, whether we're going to promote.
Right, right. And, and, I mean, you couldn't establish a search committee and tell them to do a search of one because when you establish a search committee, you have to have a minimum of two candidates come to the appointing authority. You're certainly welcome to have a presentation and ask questions and then determine your vote, um, on the appointment.
So, I, I guess now I'm confused with that last statement because-
I, I think the next step is town council.
Well, no, the question, I mean, it's a question for you. Do you want to do the presentation and ask questions before or after you've made the appointment?
I, I, I mean, I think that the best way to do this, for all the reasons I've stated and, um, and with respect, well, for all the reasons I've stated, is to do it before. Um, I, I mean, if we, if we, I guess, honestly, if, if I were Chief Menardi, I'd be saying, well, why am I going to get all these questions? I've already been promoted. I mean, just, it's, it's blank backwards to promote and then hear a presentation and do all these questions. I, I don't, that makes no sense to me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know why we can't do the former. I mean, I, I would really, if, if we're, I would want to hear council say we cannot.
So, it says right on page fifteen of your packet, under public participation-
Yep.
... it says, and county council reviewed, "In the case of a promotion, the board may choose to request the incumbent provide written responses to questions, a presentation of a transition plan, and/or ask the candidate a series of questions prior to making the promotion. Alternatively, the board could make the promotion and then ask the new chief to present a transition plan and departmental vision at a subsequent meeting for the benefit of the So, that's, that's the question, it's the before or after.
So, the county, town council has-
He read it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, then we got an answer to that one question.
So, you know, I, I came into this, in our last meeting, we'll get the promotional process saying, you know, absent a reason not to, that should be the way to go. And, so the question is, do we make the vote before or after the presentation? For me, um, in, in listening to, you know, Shelby's argument, I don't- I, I think it fits with that model, right? That we get a presentation, um, we get to ask questions and then, absent a reason not to proceed with promotion, we would vote to promote. I'm observing the department, of having observed, you know, not tons of, very little one-on-one interaction with our current interim chief, but understanding his role in the advancement, um, of the department over the last several years, the feedback outside, I'm not sure I can imagine anything that would come up following the presentation interview where we would say, well, there's a reason not to. Um, you know, but my gut feeling is saying that's, if you look at, you know, vote to promote or do a full outside search, that doing the presentation, the Q and A before the vote is the compromise that, um, honors the intent of having deputies in a, in a promotional process available, um, as well as the visibility and transparency to the public that we've talked about. Um, and, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that as a direction. I'm not, I'm not, I don't necessarily think it'll change outcome.
Yeah.
But, you know, the part of this is, you know, this is one of those instances where it's, where we're talking about process, and yeah, in some, we're set, in some sense, we're, if not setting precedent, we're defining an option in a direction for future, right? That, and, and if we're going to modify the charter to make it more clear, it's like, oh, the charter can say, well, what did they do this time? That's what we want to do, right? So, is one possibility. So, I think from a, you know, from a, from a process standpoint, it's logical to Shelby's point.
Yeah, um, I think I'm okay with that. I, I would probably prefer that we provided questions ahead of time so we could get thorough and thoughtful answers and, like, I look at senate confirmation hearings and, I mean, it's one half trying to gotchas and the other, I mean, I, I think if we-
In this climate, I'm sorry, Sean, that may have been a poor analogy. That was not the intent. It was more just the, kind of the, kind of free-flowing, um, kind of Q and A. I, I, anyway, I'll, I didn't mean to cut you off, but-
No, no, no. I mean, if, if we wanted to, um, you know, prepare some question form ahead of time, I think that would probably be helpful.
So, so I think that some questions, I think, would be, would be helpful. I mean, I think, again, I would love to hear a presentation, like, again, kind of the vision, here's, here's what's working, here's what's not working, whatever, whatever it is, right? It's his presentation. Um, I think questions help frame that presentation, at least that's the way, if I were going to be the chief going before this board, I'd be like, okay, this is kind of what they want to hear and plus I'm going to provide, you know, all that I know, right? But I do think it's important that, I mean, look, being in a very public position, um, the, the police chief, town manager, fire chief, they've got to be able to be responsive to questions on their spot and certainly situations on their, on the spot. If, if, I mean, the police chief among all of them, God knows, it's life and death, right? So, um, while we're certainly not at that level of severity, I don't think of this board, but I do think this board should exercise its, um, you know, kind of, um, position, authority, whatever you want to call it, to be able to say, geez, he said something, I want to ask a clarifying question, or, um, or this is a question I have and it hasn't been answered. I mean, I just, I just think that that's fair. I mean, I, I don't think, I mean, I've worked with all of you for long enough, I don't think any of us want to do I gotcha questions. That's, that is not where I'm going here. It's just, it's the question that isn't asked that, that, you know, maybe should be. Again, in our individual opinions.
So, sorry.
No, go ahead, Ian.
I yield my time. It does sound like a-
See? You already got it. There you go.
Shelby, thank you for that because you hit what I was going to say because I still, and I know I should take it out, this senate confirmation, but I always feel like that's about, I got you and I just, to me, and this is why I struggle with, you know, and if the board decides to go down that, you know, that's the board's decision, I don't, it, to me, it sounds a little bit funny about, it's, when I've been promoted at work, I've been promoted because it's based on what I've done and- promoted at work, I've been promoted because it's based on what I've done, and I haven't had to go and then tell them again what I've done, and, you know, have them ask me questions about that. But if that's what the board wants to do, to do, I just think, to me, it's a little bit interesting. But I guess maybe, again, in process, if we were to go that way, I would frame it maybe a little bit of, we, you know, ask for a presentation and kind of outline what we're looking for. I think some, if we have upfront questions to provide them, so we can get, you know, those answers. And then, to me, it's, to get away from the gotcha questions, it's, yeah, there'll be things that will come at the presentation that we haven't thought of, but it's directed in a way that is about that versus, you know, I don't want it to be, you know, tell me about the time you kicked your dog, type things.
Yeah, 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 right, 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 right.
You know?
And I think, just, and if I may, I mean, I think, having also been through promotional processes in an organization, right, I think that the difference there is that you're usually being promoted by people who have worked with you and directly have managed you, supervised you, or there's some sort of visibility to that. And while I totally agree, and Sean, your points were spot on about the direction of the department and all, in fairness, you know, to myself, as representative of the people of this town, I, I have distantly observed Chief Menardi's work, but not directly. So, hearing that presentation and then being able to ask some further questions, again, maybe I'm one of any, although that's probably rare, right? I know you guys all can laugh at that one. I think is only fair, because I do think it's different than kind of, you know, if Christie were doing that, right, she's working with him on a daily basis. We are not. And that's where I do think it's different than a traditional kind of private organization.
If I make sure. So, yeah, I mean, my intent is certainly not to have trick questions, but I think the nature of the job is also one of which the police chief is going to be in all sorts of situations on the fly and has to be able to respond. And part of the process is to ask fair questions, but that, challenge that individual to see how they respond under that, under those situations. It's not to call them out and make them look bad. It's made to understand, you know, what their philosophy is, what their mindset is going into situations, perhaps that gives them an opportunity, talk about how they've handled those situations in previous, you know, events in the town and whatnot. So, it is, it is meant as a positive questioning-answer session, but I think each board member should be allowed and afforded the opportunity to ask, certainly, we can have canned questions to start things off. Again, I was saying it when I first, in my first comments, I thought we would have this discussion perhaps at our next meeting as to the format of this, if the board was accepting. And I still put that out there as something to mull over and think about. But, you know, maybe it's a mix of those, but I think each board member should be afforded the opportunity to ask their questions. I have, it sounds like I have even less direct relationship. I know, prior to really this whole process initiating, deputy, excuse me, interim chief Menardi did reach out and try to connect and, you know, share with me some of them, and I do see him on Facebook, so I see a lot of great things that he's done and is doing in our area. That's fantastic. But I want to have that connection. I want to be able to talk to him about issues that are important to me and issues that I think are important to the town. And they may not necessarily be the canned questions, so to speak. So, I think we need perhaps to have a mix of those two.
Any other comments, questions, motion?
Oh, Christie.
Can I just say, so, in relation to questions, those sort of canned questions that you're talking about typically come from them being sent to myself or to our assistant town manager so that we can collect them and so that we don't have duplicate questions, and so we can sort of order them. So, I would recommend, and then we can also review them. So, I would recommend that if you were going to create questions, that you would send them to us. Obviously, there could be something said that would spur additional questions that aren't on the sheet, but I think if you're going to ask questions, you should send them to us.
Now, those questions, once, let's just say we agree to go through that process, we provide twenty, thirty, fifty questions, whatever it is, you whittle those all down, we go into executive session to discuss and make sure that those are the questions that we want to ask?
No.
Okay.
I think it would be probably more like coupling questions that are similar, removing duplicative questions, you know, we can't ask fifty, but, or I don't think you would want to, but we don't have to remove them. The idea would be to sort of clean them up.
So, then, okay, so that...
But even, even with a search committee, that development of question process is an open session.
That makes, that makes sense to me. As far as ad hoc questions and the format of how that would operate, do we, you know, I'm envisioning, and, you know, ideas are welcome here, where if we come out with fifteen questions, let's say, and each board member gets three, plus whatever they want, and we allocate, I don't know, ten, fifteen minutes time per board member, or whatever they want to consume of a particular time period to ask not only those canned questions, but also the additional questions that they feel are important to their constituents.
But wouldn't we get those additional questions ahead of time?
No. I'm saying, I, no.
Yeah, no, I think...
Those would be follow-up.
Well, follow-up questions are different than having questions.
Questions that you know you want to ask, but you're not going to tell anybody you want to ask them.
Right.
These are, these are, this is not the same process we have that we use, for example, for the town planner process, where we go up multiple candidates. I think that this is an opportunity where we need to be afforded as the board to be able to ask questions on the fly, not specific to the fifteen or whatever number of questions we as a board have submitted that you've all filtered down to, but additional to that, questions that we feel are...
I guess I'm just not understanding the difference between questions that you want to ask, that you sent us, and questions you want to ask that you don't want to send ahead of time. I just don't understand the difference.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think, Patrick, I don't want to, I guess my view of this was, there are going to be some pretty standard questions, and again, I can't think of any right now, that we want to ask, right? That, again, to me, are part of the presentation. So, they might not actually even be questions where like, you know, Chief Menardi, tell us this, right? It's not a, it would be hopefully coming out of the presentation. And as those are asked and answered, if there's clarification and we need to ask them, then there's a time and place during the process to do that. I do think that we need to allow, as part of the overall presentation, at some point, if there is a clarifying question, or there's a new question that comes to mind, that's, wasn't on the sheet, wasn't addressed in the presentation, that this board be allowed to ask it. Again, I don't have an example of it. It's not like, you know, tell us about the time you kicked the dog. That's not, it's not that kind of question. I just, it might be, it might be a situational question that, you know, is, is like, you know, in this, I don't know, I can't even think of an example. But I think the board should trust each other to ask those questions if it's necessary. And again, not that we wouldn't ask those in advance, because if you have the questions, then put them on the list so that they can be incorporated into the presentation. I don't think it matters how they're answered, is my point, as long as they're asked and answered.
Yeah. I would say one thing, if we'd done a search process and we talked about getting to know other candidates, if we'd done a search process, we would have hired a candidate based on those canned questions.
Maybe.
Isn't that how the process works? Everybody gets the same questions? So, I'm just saying, because it's not that process, because we are saying it, we're considering the promotion process, then we should have added on the questions.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my maybe was, you still might be asking clarifying questions, which would...
I think clarifying a point is fine. I think clarifying is fine.
We want to ask.
Yeah.
If we need, if we would like clarification, or there's something in the presentation where we didn't think about that raises a question, or follow-up for additional information, that that would be fine. But if we have questions that we want to ask, we would put those, we'd submit those. We're not putting, at this point, we're not talking about any limit on the number. We're just talking about avoiding duplicates, or combining, you know, the seven questions into one question with seven parts. And then we, and then we'd have the opportunity to just clarify and follow up. I mean, when I, when we hire people in my company, we have a preset list of questions we ask during the interview. And of course, based on the interview, we might ask a follow-up question for clarification or for...
But they don't get those questions in advance.
We provide some questions in advance.
But, right.
Some we don't.
Right.
Here we would, because that's, mirrors the process we use in the public.
Well, no, when we, if we do a public search, we don't give the candidate the questions. We, but the questions are...
They're just reviewed and ordered. I mean, that's really all we're talking about, is reviewing them, ordering them, and potentially eliminating duplicates. And, and just the sort of canned, so, Kim and I will typically seek questions from other communities. It sounds like that's maybe what you're referring to as canned questions. We certainly don't need to do that. We can just wait for your questions.
We don't need to reinvent the wheel. I mean, if there are questions that, you know, have been asked of, I mean, we go through our past process, right? So, what questions were asked, we can start there and then from there.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean...
But, I mean, go ahead.
No, I mean, I guess I was just going to say, I agree with Shelby with where you go. I think it's, here are the questions we're going to ask. I guess I'm just, Patrick, looking for a little more clarification, because to me, it's like, well, I know this question right now, but I'm not going to tell anybody about it, but it's not a gotcha question, but to me, it sounds like a gotcha question. It's a question I want to ask that I'm hoping that I can catch you on, because I don't want to let anybody else know what that question is.
No, so, great, great point. And certainly, I don't want it to be perceived in that way. But I can certainly envision a situation where I could have a resident in between the time, we select questions two weeks before we have this, this process occur, ask me a question that may be relevant to ask the chief, something that we didn't put through our question process. That may be very relevant and very important, that I didn't think of, or nobody on this board thought of. So, I can't ask that question. I think it's really important that we as a board trust each other, that we're not going to put any candidate into the situation where it's gotcha and we make them look in a bad light, but really drive to the, to the point of, is this candidate, you know, the right candidate for the town? That's what it's really all about. And if we're in agreement already that we're talking about this being prior to a vote, then that's what we're doing. That's what we're effectively doing. And we need to be able and provided the opportunity as board members to provide that level of transparency in those questions to the community.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Are we ready for a motion? I'm ready for a motion.
Shelby, you want to make the motion?
Sure, sure. This was my Billy Wick? Okay, sure. So, I would move that the board move forward with a promotion process as follows, that the interim chief be asked to come before the board to do a presentation. The board will, I know this is a very long motion, the board will submit questions in advance to the town manager, to, and assistant town manager to format and consolidate. And that presentation will be made before the board, before an appointment is actually issued.
And do we want to add anything to, in regards to allowing board members to ask questions above and beyond the...
The individual board members will respectfully be able to ask questions that have not been addressed during the presentation. I don't know that that needs to be part of the motion. I would hope that that's common courtesy.
I don't know if we need to be that specific, but okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
And that was a very long motion, so we can amend that. It was more of a train of thought than it was probably an eloquent motion.
Any questions or comments on the motion?
I get my question. I don't know that we need that last part. I think it's just, and I think you talked about it, courtesy and trust among the board, that if you need to ask further clarifying questions that aren't on that list, that we trust that you'll ask those in the best interest of the process. So, I don't know that we need to have that piece in the...
So amended to remove that last statement.
So, but I just want to make the point, again, it's not just clarifying questions that I'm talking about.
I agree.
Okay.
I totally agree.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I just...
I'm just saying, I, again, it's trust of the board. We've had the discussions.
Yeah. I think if there are questions that we have as individual board members, as part of our responsibility, we need to bring those questions forward and see that, have the town manager...
Correct.
Put them on the list. And then, we're going to review the questions to determine, are we going to, are these all the right questions, right? Isn't that part of it?
No, I don't think we...
I know.
Well, that's why I'm a little confused. We did that in the planning, we reviewed the, we brought those questions together, and we talked about them.
In open session.
Right, right. So, I guess, so, so I know we have a motion, but as part of that discussion, just so we're all clear, that we would submit those questions, you guys are going to go through them, make sure there aren't duplicates, and consolidate them as needed. Then, we would review those questions in open session.
I didn't think that you would. I thought that you would just ask, I thought that you would, from tonight, move to that whole process that you're talking about at your next meeting.
So, let me, where I'm going with my question, if there's a question on there where one of us feels like, whoa, we don't want to ask that question, don't we need to have a discussion about it?
You can, I mean, in a typical...
Or we just let it sit?
I mean, usually, you would let it sit, because in a typical, like, in a typical process, the search committee would give you your finalists, we would give you questions. You wouldn't have a discussion about the questions you asked.
Okay, that's fine. I just, given the discussion we've been having about questions, I want to ask questions.
There's amended motion, here's an amended second.
Okay. All right. And all those in favor of that process?
For... Do you want, for support of the board, I mean, I do want to move forward the promotional process. I still question whether it's proper, but I will, for a full unanimous support of the board, I will support that, because that's the board decision to move forward, so.
Can you clarify your interest in having town council talk to you at that meeting?
I don't think...
Yeah, I think we're beyond it now.
Yeah. I thought you had a question about, okay.
Already been resolved.
We're going to save some money here.
I think we've already gone down that process.
Right.
Okay.
And you're going to do that on August 29?
Oh.
I think we should check with the chief to...
Okay, but if he's available?
Can we push it out to our September 12 meeting? Is there any reason why we can't? And only because I'm, it's the day before school starts. I don't know if we're having a meeting that day anyway. We're not scheduled, right?
We are.
Oh, we are scheduled for that?
Yeah, so, our summer schedule is the 11th, the 1st, and the 29th.
Okay, well...
I think we move forward on the 29th.
I guess I would just ask how full is that agenda going to be already?
The 29th.
I, I mean, look, I want to move forward on this process, but I guess I would...
I'd imagine the 12th, we're going to be into town meeting, Warren.
Okay. I don't, I'll go with whatever.
It could be a different day of the week. I mean, it's up to all of you. There's also the 22nd. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
So, we could have four meetings this month?
Well, we don't have to, to meet on 39th. We can meet on 22nd instead of...
No, 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 it's fine. If you guys want to do the 29th, that's fine. It's fine. We had a scheduled meeting, it is what it is.
I'm comfortable, by the way.
I am, I guess I just, I wouldn't move up to 22nd. I just think you want to give the chief time to prepare, since we're asking to put together a presentation.
Well, we got to submit our questions. We got to give him time to do that.
You have the 5th? I mean, it's up to you. It doesn't matter.
I mean, the other thing I'll say is just, if there is public interest in that meeting, depending upon what it is, it's the day before school starts. People that want to watch it, people that may want to attend it, I don't know.
I mean, I'll say I'm fine either way.
Well, anytime after that is also a school day.
Yep, you're right.
I have no feeling either way.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I...
I just think it's, whatever date you choose, it's really important. Obviously, all five of you are there, so if there's a potential for anyone to not be there on the 29th, you should pick an alternative date.
Can I ask, and does he have any, any vacation issues that you're aware of right now?
Not on that date.
Okay. I mean, but before that, that would materially affect his ability to prepare.
Believe there is a vacation.
Okay. So, I guess what I would say is, the 29th would be preferred, but if not, then we would do the 12th, based on kind of... Based on kind of, does that seem fair?
I think, yeah, it goes back. I think we check with the chief.
I think he's got enough time to do what he needs to.
I want him to be, give him the chance to prepare.
So, you want me to give him both options?
Yep.
Yes. That's what I, I'm fine either. I'll be there at either, have them both on my calendar.
I'm planning on being there either way, so. But I think we should give him the chance to.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion and, oh, we voted, I mean.
We voted, yeah.
We're good. We're all good. Thank God.
Unanimous.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Good discussion, you guys.
That was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an update on the emergency assistance shelter.
Okay. So, a lot has happened.
Where to begin?
Huh? I know.
Where to begin?
Um, so, the town has been, has, have been hosting homeless families for a while, but has done so with the state contracting with an onsite provider. On Friday, we were informed that we would, that homeless families would be coming to Westboro that were not going to be supported with an onsite provider and staying in a hotel. This is, this. Oh, sure. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. So, on Friday, the town was informed that there would be homeless families coming to stay in a hotel with no onsite provider. So, while this was new to Westboro, we knew that it was happening in some other communities.
Could you, Christie, for the onsite provider, could you just, because for the public listening, or they don't know what those services are.
So, that's a contracted entity that would help folks who are in hotels with wraparound services. So, meals getting set up with EBT cards, Mass Health, working through medical and school enrollment, things like that. So, we did respond on Friday night to help these families and what was alluded to earlier. We responded, a couple of members of the board, so Sean and Shelby were there, myself, and then also members of our police and fire department who were excellent in terms of their work with these families and trying to understand their needs, understanding that there is a very, that there is a communication gap that they, you know, most of them speaking Haitian Creole and Spanish. So, everyone was really wonderful and we were able to provide them, meet some immediate needs, largely around sort of toiletries and things like that. The state is providing lunch and dinner for these individuals. So, we did that on Friday night. On Saturday morning, we met to kind of go over next steps. And then we were advised that there was another hotel in Westboro that was receiving some additional families. So, we went there and we did similar work with those families to meet some immediate needs. We, we met first thing Monday morning to understand kind of what our next, what our go forward was. There was an outreach to a neighborhood in Westboro by Ian and his wife. And they really, you know, provided us with some wonderful supplies that we could meet the needs of families because we didn't know how many were coming. Ultimately, yesterday, all of the families were moved into one hotel. And we were able to start working with them on state services. So, the state continues to provide lunch and dinner from a restaurant that makes food similar to their countries of origin. And we were able to provide them with some breakfast food that they could have in their rooms. The, our public health director has brought in the state rapid response team. So, that, that team's duty is to, or responsibility, is to do some medical assessments and to really understand, you know, sort of where folks are coming from and what needs they might have, specifically medical needs. So, that, so, working through that process and understanding that the Department of Transitional Assistance will also be available to come in to help with signing up for Mass Health and EBT cards and things like that. Today, Governor Haley declared a state of emergency related to this sort of exponential rise in folks needing shelter. So, what she described in her statement was that they, we had nearly 5,600 families, which equalling about 20,000 individuals in shelters throughout the state. And so, that is an eight, that represents about an 80% increase over last year. So, the governor declared the state of emergency to really raise this issue to the federal government and has called upon cities and towns and nonprofit agencies and even private residents to really come forward in support of the need for shelter of these families. As the board knows, this is a right to shelter state, so we're required to house families and pregnant women. So, you know, we have had some good communication. I would also say that our legislative delegation has been wonderful in connecting us with agencies that might help with getting specific, with meeting specific needs, also meeting the town's needs. And so, they've been really great in that effort and being advocates for us. They were actually able to put together a meeting today with Ed Augustus, who is the Secretary of Housing and Livable Communities, that Westboro, Northboro, and Southboro were represented at. And so, we were able to convey our concerns and our struggles with sort of what's going on and hear from Secretary Augustus on kind of thoughts moving forward. I think our concerns continue to be the same. This, this needs to be equitably, it needs to be an equitable responsibility throughout the state of all communities. Right now, they've identified about 80 communities that are working to support this crisis. And then, really, the need for notification, communication. And I think all, all boroughs, communities echo the same concerns. We issued a press release after the state of emergency was issued where we've identified the needs that the families currently in Westboro have. So, we are asking folks that are interested in supporting those needs to make donations to the fire department beginning tomorrow through Friday, between 10:00 and 2:00, to where we'll be collecting those items. And really, that's, I know it's a short timeframe, but it's because we have nine families and we don't want to sort of overextend resources. We think that that will, we're hopeful that that will meet our needs, for, at least in the short term. So, we don't know how many families to expect to come to Westboro. We do know that the shelter is, at the Sharp Building, is still intended to stand up by the end of this month. We're still being told that we can expect about 20 families in that shelter and that there will be an onsite provider. But obviously, we don't know if that will change. So, I think that wraps up everything, but Alan and Sean were at the meeting with, with me today with Secretary Augustus. And I know all of you have been involved in different ways, so.
Thank you, Christie. And I did mean to say earlier, you know, with the events over the weekend, our town staff did an incredible job. They represented this town extremely well. Thank you to our town manager. Am I not in the microphone?
Well, just for the room, more, more, for the room than.
Thank you to our town manager. Thank you to our health director, Jen Sullivan. Thank you to our police and fire chief and their departments for all their hard work. It, you know, they took what could have been a tough situation and made it much better and showed a lot of compassion for these folks who I feel comfortable that, you know, with where they've landed temporarily. So, just thank you to the town. And in terms of today's meeting, it, it was great that we got the opportunity to meet with Senator, pardon me, Secretary Augustus. He came there. He was apologetic. And, you know, they are looking to try and improve on what happened over this weekend. And hopefully, we'll start to see that. Alan, I don't know if you have any comments as well?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
And I know, I realize there've been questions about the, you know, the population and the placement of emergency assistance shelters. And, you know, well, over the last week or two, it's been, there's been more of a concentration with folks who've recently immigrated or are seeking asylum or are refugees. But when you look at that 5,600 families and 20,000 people, at this point, many, many, if not a majority of those are existing residents of the Commonwealth who, since the end of COVID restrictions and with the housing crunch and rapidly rising rents, are finding themselves homeless and in need of shelter. We're aware of, you know, individuals, you know, is recently, I was contacted by someone last week because she was told that the next day she was out of her apartment and she couldn't afford to pay the rent for another month and was looking for assistance. And so, we, we're seeing that even in our community. And so, this is, this is a large problem. One of the things that was very evident from our conversations with the secretary today is that the, at the state level, we're still playing catch-up. That the rate of increase in people needing housing is, the state is struggling with resources, not necessarily money, but people and organization to, to be able to quickly house and get people into shelter in a way that they're supported. And there is not going to be a quick fix for that. They are working on it. There is no, there is no outlineable plan on how they're gonna get from where they are today to a point where the system's working better. But they know they need it, has to. And so, there's a lot of hope. Maybe too much hope is needed to know that, that the situation could get better. I, my expectation is that this process, not just for our, not just for Westboro, but for other communities, is going to continue to put a level of responsibility and burden on the local community. And it's going to involve, hopefully, members of the community stepping forward to give and assist. But it's also gonna require a continued effort and time and energy from town staff and town departments across the board. This has, you know, the whole situation has, you know, very broad, you know, very, very broad implications. And so, I, we need a realistic view. And as this goes forward, I expect we'll continue to plan and strategize to be a willing and effective partner for the state. At the same time, we continue to demand that they live, that the state lives up to their part of the, you know, their part of the bargain, if you will. I won't make any personal comments on the government's declaration of state of emergency and what it included and what it didn't. We'll save that for another time.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I'll just say, I'm extremely proud of the community and, and the, the town departments. And I think we, as a community, are, are shining right now and we should continue to do that. So, I look forward to seeing the continued support by not only, by not only our town departments, but also by the, the larger community to support these people. This is a humanitarian issue and, you know, this is something that we, as Americans, shine around the world as a beacon of hope for people who are in these situations. So, again, I'm just very proud of it and I want to thank Christie for her, her efforts this weekend with everybody to, to make it happen and continue to make it happen.
I would just add that I think one of the things we talked about Monday morning and kind of what we can do as a board, I mean, the staff is doing beyond what I could imagine. So, I echo what everyone says and the, the just tremendous work the staff did, I think, as a board. We can advocate for the community with our legislators, with the state. You know, and should be prepared to do that via letters, conversations, whatever, as the, but I think we want to do that in appropriate ways, but I think that's really a role as us as a board, as leaders of the community, elected leaders, to be that advocate to them. Or advocate, advocating on their behalf, on the community's behalf, to those that need to hear from us. So, I ask that we, we do that, but we do it in a way that's, that makes sense in conjunction with our town manager and others because they have sometimes the pulse that we may not have as, well, leaders, we're still volunteers here too and they have more information sometimes than we do. But I think we can, we can do that and we can do that well. I think Alan talked about a partnership here. It is a partnership. It's a difficult situation. I think we just have to stay on top of the state being an equal partner or an appropriate partner with us. And what we saw over the weekend, and it sounds like discussions today and the apologies, was, was not a equal partnership. I'll give them, I guess, a little pass of being overwhelmed, but, but we need to ensure that, that they do improve that over time because it puts us in a difficult situation as a town. And when I say town, I, I, that's broader than our residents. It's also to our businesses. You know, the hotels that are getting folks unaware, are unaware about, you know, food being delivered, unaware about, you know, do they need to refrigerate food? How do they distribute food? I mean, things like that. There just has to be better communication. And I think we'll work with that. Again, the, the, the town and our staff went, and went above and beyond. I'm just amazed by the work that was done through all hours of the day and night. To my fellow board members, just thank all of you for, for that. The, the community really did shine. Patrick, as you said, I think that's what, who we are as a community. You know, this is not, it's not going away tomorrow. We've got to work through it, figure it out, be a partner, I think, to Christie's thing. I think we continue, need to advocate that, that with this crisis, that, you know, we have 351 cities and towns and we need to, you know, partner. Don't drive through those that look nicer than others and place them in places, you know, that, that you think are better. I think it has to be an equal partnership with our fellow communities in the state. So, I've talked longer than I should, but I think, you know, we've got our work cut out for us. And I know that as a town, we need to shine, but we need to, as a board, we need to stay on top and advocate on behalf of the community.
Thank you, Ian. Thank you. Any other thoughts?
So, I will echo without restating all the comments made by the board. So, thank you. And that includes deep appreciation for the work of the town and all the relevant teams and departments. I, I will add that I am encouraged, because I remain always optimistic in life, hopeful that part of the emergency declaration, as I understand it and the work that is being done, goes certainly beyond the Commonwealth's borders. And that goes to the federal government. And a big part of, kind of, part of the challenge is the complexity, certainly, of our immigration system and our laws, but also the inability of immigrants to obtain work visas. So, I was pleased to see that the, that, that is a kind of a key bullet point, if you will, of the, the governor's push and plea to our federal legislators and to the Biden administration. And I think that, you know, if we, we can draw a lot of assumptions about kind of the hows and the whys and the problems of the system, but at, at the end of the day, all of these people are people. And they want, I mean, I, I sort of always challenge myself to think, what would it take for someone to leave their country, their home, where they have roots, where they have family, and bring, in many cases, their children thousands of miles through desperate situations? And how desperate do you have to be to do that? And, and what are you willing to do once you get here? And so, I hope that we can support them as a community and continue to, while, obviously, ensuring that Westboro is doing its fair share in, in partnership. And so, anyway, enough said.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Sorry, can I say, so, so we have posted on social media sites, as well as the town website, that press release which has very specific requests in terms of the donations. that press release which has very specific requests in terms of the donations that we're hoped, we hope to receive. But I would encourage folks who are interested in donating to continue to check the town's website because as we receive items, we will change that list as needed, so. And we also did put in the press release that we're looking for folks who might be available for translation services, specifically outside of sort of normal work hours in case we do have families coming late at night, so. And we have already had people call, so thank you very much for that.
So thank you, Christie. All right, next we'll move on to the town manager report, including but not limited to Sandra Pond update.
Thanks. So apologies for not getting that to you ahead of this meeting. Just a quick update. One of our Sandra Pond wardens, Gary Bowman, came to us in April, expressed some concerns about sort of the use around Sandra Pond and the ability to enforce that. While we haven't looked at updating the bylaw right now, I just wanted the board to know that the DPW director is working on creating better signage around what's permitted and not permitted around Sandra Pond. And the interim chief has issued a directive to have patrols include patrolling of that area in, in terms of helping with enforcement. So there's more sort of discussion to be had, but that's the update at this point.
All right. Thank you very much, Christie.
So it was limited to that.
Why don't we skip to meeting minutes, because we usually end with issues and correspondence. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the approval of the meeting minutes of August 1st, 2023.
I'll second. All those in favor? Five to zero. Great. Issues and correspondence of the select board. Do I have a volunteer?
I have nothing.
Thanks very much. It's only been a week.
Yeah, exactly.
So one quick thing that has happened in the last couple of weeks. Several residents have reached out to me or in passing, mentioned that with all the heavy rain we've had, that the work of the DPW has been incredibly helpful in preventing street flooding and flooded yards. People have noticed the little white tri, you know, diamond signs about the DPW easements and have even mentioned, used the terms when they did the sector maintenance in my part of town. They fix things so the water in the street can make it to the drains and it's having an impact. So I wanted to publicly acknowledge that and ask the town manager to forward that on, that great feedback to Director Pant and his team.
Thank you. I have nothing this week.
Just a couple of quick committee updates. So regarding the senior needs assessment work group, that work group continues to work. Kim is leading that coordination and conversation that includes residents, our, our director of council and aging and other members. Affordable housing trust is represented. We've met, I think, three or four times now, have made really good headway in combing through the senior needs assessment and pulling out ideas and actionable items. And I would say, I think it's fair to say we're on track for that October update back to the board. So really, really good work being done there and happy to represent the board doing that. The other update at the active transportation safety committee meeting yesterday, I, I did have to leave for another meeting. So I had to leave a little bit early, but while I was present, I just want to make the board aware that there was a pretty detailed discussion raised by the committee members about for future, basically creating a permanent pedestrian bike lane on, I'll say, more heavily used roads, not necessarily state highway, but think, think Otis, think Flanders, think middle of town maybe, or extensions or branches off of that to narrow traffic lanes to create a wider and more defined and consistent lane for biking and, and other pedestrians. So that was a conversation and some conversation, excuse me, follow-up needed back to that committee from DPW to understand and obviously public safety to understand that. But just want to make the board aware of that request and, and strong interest from the committee to do that. I think that is all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening, so could I get a motion?
Okay.
Were we doing all of them or?
No.
Okay, yeah. So I was just looking through them.
Sorry, you can cross off.
Okay. All right, I'll move into enter to executive session. Under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy session in preparation, preparation for negotiations and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Christie Williams. And under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the firefighter and Department of Public Work Unions. And if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. Under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro Lax Media LLC and Lax Media MA LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA number 2285CV01281. If the chair declares, declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court, 19TL000768. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21a6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 1500 Union Street. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental, detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21a7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of August 1st, 2023.
I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating, litigating, and bargaining position. We will not be reconvening in an open session after executive session. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kio, yes. Thank you, Westboro TV. We are now adjourned.